Okay, it is officially 5:30, so I'm gonna call this regular meeting of the Marion County Board of Education to order. Our first item is item 1A, and I am going to make a motion to amend the September 8, 2022 board meeting agenda to remove item 3C, to remove item 6F, to add item 6O, and that item will be the approval of the 22 KATF project application. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Our next item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance in the Moment of Silence. We don't have students in our back seat here tonight, so everybody will please stand. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to our oath for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item 3A, which is public comment. I don't believe we have anyone present wishing to make public comment. Okay, then we'll move on to item 3B, which is student report. Mr. Spalding?
Thank you. I'll jump right into it. And I just want to say before I get started, this is just a snippet of some things that have gone on, some good news to share. So you should see on the screen there, construction up there. That's actually what the rear entrance of the high school looks like today. So it looks like it's always been that way, nice green space. They put the sod in yesterday, I think they worked till pretty late last yesterday evening. It looks amazing. So when you leave today, you might want to swing by and check it out. It looks pretty awesome. You can see over there, some outdoor seating, both the concrete and the tables there, putting some trees, and then of course the sod there. So we're pretty proud of that. We're working on our new main entrance. There will be a secure vestibule going into the high school. So if you've noticed over there, they've taken off the front of the brick by the entry. They'll actually extend that out. And of course, the office area will go where the current library is. So there will be a secure vestibule there where parents and visitors will enter in. The SRO office will be right beside that. So it'll just be a lot safer than it is currently. So again, that's something to be pretty excited about. They've got the new footer board as far as the addition on the front of the building there. They also got plumbing in for the new restrooms for the administration suite and the media center. And so they're making great progress on it. A good thing about that is, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Spalding, but that work was scheduled to start after fall break.
That's correct.
So we're way ahead of schedule. So a shout out to Griggs Enterprises for that. Continue on there. Again, there's the picture there at the front where they've torn that brick off, and they'll again extend that out. The picture you see there in the left-hand corner, that's along the outside of the third hallway, so they're again continuing work there.
I'm here.
The picture you see on the right there is actually in the new addition portion. So it's the hallway that essentially will connect both the third and second hallways there, which what you'd be seeing there before this would've been, of course, the outside of the building. So again, that's something we're pretty proud of. They're continuing to work with the CTE addition. They've been painting the HVAC ductwork installations, and then of course the mechanical yard that I mentioned a minute ago. Quite a few things professional development going on. Of course, our reading academies, we had 17 teachers, three instructional coaches, and three administrators who attended the letters training. And LETTER stands for Language Essential for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. It's just helping our, it's an evidence-based approach to help our teachers understand how to better teach in the area of reading. Our Center for School Safety, we help audit at LES and Marion County Middle School. If they interview both students and staff, they interview parents. They actually spend all day long at both facilities there from, I mean, they started with morning pickup, and they didn't leave until every student was out of the building. So it was a complete holistic viewpoint of our safety of our buildings. We received very positive feedback at both Marion Middle and LES on that, so we're pretty proud of that. And then the last one there is our SRO, Mark Romney, completed Level 3 training at EKU a bit ago. He was only 1 out of 140 in the state who would've been considered a Level 3. So we're pretty proud of him as well. Continuing on, professional development. We held our first Marion County Educator Support Program meeting on September 1st. And for those of you may be unaware of what that is, a couple of years ago, the state did away with funding for K-Tip. So this is what we have done to support our new teachers. It's incredibly important, especially as, you know, we have more teachers who are coming in under a temporary provisional pathway. So this is just a support structure. Each teacher that's in this program will be, or has been assigned a mentor. They spend approximately 50 hours throughout the course of the year, both in observations, outside of class hours, attending professional development meetings, such as what you see there in the picture. It's just, it's designed to just help that teacher have a very successful first year. This is, I think, our third year doing that. And again, it's just something we're pretty proud of. Not every district does this, and it's incredibly important as we look to retain our staff members that we currently have. Our instructional coaches presented to teachers on classroom management, formative assessment, and then day-to-day procedures. And Dr. Gibson and Dana Thomas provided instructions to our mentors on how to be good mentors. So thanks to Dr. Gibson and Ms. Thomas for doing that. Again, just a very good program. Preschool numbers there, you can see it, LES 33, GES 39, CES 19, West Marion 36, for a total of 127. On our Dollar Park Imagination Library, we have 677 active and 915 graduate. So if you haven't seen this, this is pretty cool. There's been some pictures online, and I wanted to make sure everyone saw this. So our custodian at West Marion, Ray Thompson, he actually refurbished our observation deck at West Marion, and it is incredible. It is a great outdoor classroom space, and it's just something we're pretty proud of. So again, thanks for him, part of all of this hard work on that. Student leadership, last Friday, our student investors held their annual retreat. It was held on September 2nd. We had sessions that were focused on responsibilities and public speaking. Mr. Simpson, along with several others, hosted that. And again, just a good day for them to work on their leadership. Marion County Night Academy students applied to join the Knights Council Leadership Team. So thanks to you, Ms. Brady, for sending that in, and they've launched their school store. Continuing on, Marion County High School now has a media class which will produce video content for the high school. Mr. Hibbert's doing that for us. It's gonna be pretty awesome what they're gonna be able to do with that. We bought them a specialized Apple computer so that they can do some video editing and such. We've had to work through a few glitches on that, but we're getting there, Mr. Peterson, right? So again, that will be something that you will get some good project.
That one, that project there, the Marion County Education Foundation, that's part of a Mr. Hibbert's project there, along with Coach Clements, applied for a grant with the Marion County Education Foundation and won for that project. So it's a, I think it's really exciting to see them do that for sure.
Awesome, thank you for sure.
Yeah.
So just a point to be aware of, we've had our first phase of our ESTER audit. It's been completed, and our second phase will be done in October. We're back when all of that's completed, but just wanted to make everyone aware. Just like to thank a couple of partners tonight. Earlier in the week, McDonald's donated quite a few supplies, so I was fortunate enough to head down to McDonald's, and Kim and I accepted those, loaded up the back of my truck, headed back to central office. So again, we're very, very thankful for McDonald's for doing that. And then on the picture on the right there is earlier in the week, our main contractor, Griggs, hit water line, which happens, and shut down Glasscock and the high school and the bus garage and the maintenance shop. So we were without water just very, very briefly, and that's mainly thanks to Marion County Water, who was on scene within a matter of minutes. So they worked, I think the entire thing from start to finish was maybe less than an hour. So again, we couldn't do what we knew without our partnerships. And again, just a special thanks to McDonald's and Marion County Water for being great partners.
Chris, did 811 get involved in that?
The first, this was all in.
It's the contractor responsibility. And just to be honest, the pipe was exposed, it was backfilling, and actually hit it. So it was already exposed. He didn't hit it digging, he hit it backfilling, put the rock back in.
So I was in Frankfurt for training, and I looked down at my phone, and please call me. And I'm like, this is not good. So I called, and that's what they told me, so.
It's really, it turned out to be such a bad sign.
Yes, absolutely. Which again, you know, we didn't know that at the time, but we're very thankful. But it could've been a bigger deal, I had it not been for Marion County Water and their.
Call 811 whenever you need.
They're in the head of one of them. And just an update on our track, retain and recruit efforts. Again, this is something I'm pretty proud of. 28 students from Campbellsville University will visit Marion County next on September 14th. And they're going to, they're gonna start here at central office. We're gonna talk to them about the great opportunities to work in Marion County. We're actually going to allow them to visit some classrooms and observe. And then they're gonna continue back over here, we're gonna feed them lunch, and just again, talk about why Marion County is a good place to work. And just one other item there is we do have our track, retain, and recruit committee. We do have all the members in place for that, so we look forward to getting that work started. Any questions?
I just want to give another thank you to Marion County Water and Mr. Toby Spalding and Mr. John Paul Spalding for being so responsive. You know, when you hear that, when board members get a text that the main water line had been hit and all of the buildings that were impacted, I would guess, Ms. Akers, that the bathrooms over at Glasscock get used pretty frequently, so that one would still be a little nerve-wracking. But thank you to Toby and John Paul and Marion County Water for responding so quickly to that. Any other questions, Thomas? Is work solved? Okay, moving on to item 3D. Mr. Love?
I'm in Rome in the lives, just right there. 217 at Calvary with preschool, you got 236. 436 at Glasscock with your preschool, 474. Lemon Elementary is at 331, 366 total. And 381 at West Marion, 414 with preschool. And then rounding out the rest of the schools, middle school, 442. Night Academy, 545. Marion County High School is at 687, and QC Spalding, 121. So that puts us, total students, that puts us down 22 from 2018 to 19, which was our last normal year, but up class difference-wise, nine from last year. Any questions? Moving on to attendance monthly. So our August, you see is red, which means it was below what it was last year. And of course, that's a couple of factors involved in that, we had other many days involved, and we had an issue with some sickness there in August that hit pretty quick. But it looks like we're doing pretty good for September so far, so we're up over our last month there. Moving on to the year, to date attendance. Let's scroll that, let's see the numbers from last year. You see, we're pretty much on track with what we were last year as far as our year-to-date attendance. It's about the same average. And then finally, day-to-day. Let's scroll this, you can see the colors. So green looks good. We had to see, put maybe one or two greens last year, so it's good to see a little bit more this year. So still low, but rebounding. Any questions?
Thank you. Moving on, item 3E is the finance report. Mr. Spalding?
Cool review of the month of August. Started with property tax. It looks great, we're at 5,000 percentage points, but due to a timing of a check of $133,000, so that catches itself up. Motor vehicle was up, $25,000. Utility taxes, again, we just got a bigger check of $165,000 in July, so more early than the past. Interest is up, and will be throughout the year, if we talk about the board, it increased, they actually doubled the interest rate from 2.5% to 1.5%. So that will continue throughout the year. See, SEAT is up $63,000 again, because of transportation, more so than the previous $100 per child. Any others, actually down, it's down 73%. When you look at it, it's about $12,000, that had to do with preschool tuition. Last year, we started earlier, so we just got some less students this week. So looking for a month, through the close, we did 2.6 in receipts this year versus 2 million last year. So we're up by $581,000 over this last year's receipts. Expenses going on through, they're pretty standard. You know, a lot of these are gonna be, did you see the increases are due to the salary increase of the 2% and 50 cents on the hour? So that's basically what it is. And then some of you'll see maybe as much as, instead of transportation, we're actually, we spent less this year again when you start school a later than year two. So we hadn't had any school days, we had this one, so. Looking at the receipts, oh, sorry, the expenses for the month, 1.59 versus 1.64 for $53,000. Again, life is gonna be with not school a later day, but on the year, we are ahead a total of $635,000 in revenue receipts and safety expenses. And then we give you the trend data that we started doing, which kind of worked in the bigger highlight, different items. You know, just people aren't seeing if there's not a lot of excitement going on this year, 15 days in school, 16 expenses.
Questions, Mr. Spalding? Moving on to item 4A, and I need a motion, please. Make a motion to consider approval of additions to the state process management. Page 12. Brady, do you want to highlight or change?
I would defer Ms. Cravens for that, she, that's her work.
So basically, they have lowered the amount of hours that each participant has to do, but they have also lowered the ratio for the instructor slash participant. So basically, they put it in pack and then count the hours less. And then in the paperwork, there is a paperwork, then Mr. Vicky Magley is our lead, as the instructor. And he's no longer instructor for us, I haven't figured out why, but he's no longer instructor for us. And so I want to get that language cleaned up a little bit.
Questions here? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item 5A.
Make a motion to consider approval to accept tilt skillet bid for Marion County Middle.
I'll second it. Okay, it's just accepted. So all in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item 5B.
Make a motion to consider approval to award this tilt skillet bid for Marion County Middle to a CNT design for a fleet of an inch in the amount of $2,668.02.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion on item 5C.
Make a motion to consider approval to accept the combat oven bid for going in school.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion on item 5D.
Make a motion to, to award the combination oven bid for Marion County Middle School for $36,508.45 to CNT design.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item 5E.
Make a motion to consider approval to accept the standalone freezer bid for West Marion Elementary.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion on item 5F.
Make a motion to consider approval for the standalone freezer for West Marion Elementary School to CNT design, $28,625.
I'll second it. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item 5G.
Make a motion to consider approval to accepting Stephen packages bids for Marion County Middle.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item 5H.
Make a motion to consider approval for the same package bid for Marion County Middle School and Night Academy. Our amount is $143,000.
I'll second it, thank you.
Here is the seating package, if anyone would like to review it, it's available for us to see. But Ms. Wheeler, this is kind of similar to what we see at the high school.
Night Academy is pretty similar to the high school. It's got some of the booths and some rounds. Marion Middle, not so much, it's more like what you saw at West Marion. However, when you all approve, there's different numbers for Marion Middle and Night Academy. You just said the Night Academy in the first. There's two separate papers on those.
That's all we've got? Yeah. Okay, um, we'll see. Let's take a step back. Terry, can you amend your motion, please, to remove Marion County Middle School from that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I want to amend that motion to remove Marion County Middle School.
Joey, there you go.
I'll say.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Updated for the second phase for Marion County Middle School. This one? Move that.
Can we get that question as well?
What's it getting? Here, do you want to see what we? Right. We're changing the ground. Um, let's see, next item on the agenda is item 5I. If you can help me out and pull that one up. I'm gonna win it. I'm gonna make a motion to consider approval of the 22, 23 tax rates to be 58 cents for total real estate, 58 cents for tangible real estate, and 52.6 for multiple, or for motor vehicles. To include four exonerations and 0.1 cents on motor vehicles.
So it'll be 58 plus 0.1 for exoneration, 52.6 for motor vehicle.
Okay.
And I will say.
Questions here?
No, just, this is actually be a lower rate than last year. They're giving 0.1, we actually go from 59 to 58, if I correct my answer.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item 5J.
Make a motion to consider approval of the 2022, 23 tax collection rate Marion County Sheriff's Office. At 3.5%.
Um, Ms. Brady, you want to talk a little bit about what this is?
Sure, so in the statute, Sheriff's Offices can charge between 1.5 and 4%. Historically, the rate here has been 3.75%. Mr. Spalding and I met with Sheriff Lemins maybe a month ago or so, and it was a great meeting. We agreed to withhold the Sheriff's Office harm unless in the total amount over last year. And he graciously agreed to actually lower the rate as a result. So essentially, it's going to be no harm to the sheriff while saving the district some additional money. We're gonna continue to do that over the next few years. So just a thank, you know, thanks to the Sheriff's Office, we really do appreciate it. So to summarize, it'd go from 3.75% to 3.5%. Again, thanks to Sheriff Lemins and Sheriff's Office for working this on.
Also, the reason it'd be held harmless is because of the increase in assessments. So he'll be collecting basically the same number of tax bills, but he'll be collecting larger portions. So his income will be pretty steady with the client by reducing the rate.
I know, I know the working budget is next, I think, but in the working budget, we forget the same.
We did.
Expenses for next year.
Not known for sure, so hopefully there'll be some leftover that we won't spend.
Hopefully, hopefully we won't spend what we forget.
Correct.
Next question, it'll be about 29,000, it's like this.
Other questions on the line? Thank you again to Sheriff Clements for your willingness to work with us, we appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion on item 5K.
Make a motion to consider approval for the fiscal year 22, 23 work in budget.
Scott, any changes since the last?
Uh, biggest thing is, we, I went back and actually, we did this in May, so there's three budgets, the drafts in January, tentative in May, the working budget is reported in September. The biggest thing is, we made now, we actually loaded actual costs into what we spent to make sure that. Then we went back and looked, were some of those one-time costs, so we didn't need a budget for those again. And hidden this more so that since Friday last week till Tuesday, found about $81,000 more in expenses to lower based off that kind of situation. So it's very reflective of the raises that were passed. At the same meeting approved, the tentative budget, so I'm not knowing what the raise is gonna be, so that's been updated to include. We are budgeted to the personnel, not putting a lot of extra in there. So I think it's very clean. We also timed and let, we put extra money in the budget for diesel, because back in May, it was a lot higher than it is currently. Could that happen again, sure, so we left a little bit in there, so, and you know, like, Mr. knows the point about the shares, there are some additional savings, so hopefully expenses won't be as much, but not knowing some other markets. So hopefully, the expenses won't be as much, but not knowing some other markets. We, we kind of plan for the worst of that and hopefully, they can stop. Uh, not being able to control certain prices. So I think it's a good kind of budget.
Appreciate your efforts on getting this.
Well, and it also adds some money for some banks of the high school, one-time expenses and things I've been going through. So trying to include what we do now.
Any questions?
Scott, I noticed the revenue projection on property and you go back to the same issue. That'll be a conservative.
Correct. And that basically what we definitely look at, prior year actuals and feel pretty decent on that. And going forward, not knowing what the tax rate is going to be for your policies now. So I do think maybe there'll be some possibilities of increase in those, a couple of categories right now.
That's a good thing. I have a question that comes under new board members, I guess. Uh, I notice we have a service experience. I, I believe that's county employee system.
What kind of experience?
CER is.
That, that's the retirement for classified employees of.
Are all, and not, are all classified employees under?
All four time are. Yes, they're, they're in the same retirement system as CER is.
All time are.
Yes.
Okay, I just.
They qualify twenty more hours a week.
Okay, thank you.
The only difference would be if we have a classified employee whose job requires a bachelor's degree, you're hired. They're in TR system.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the work in this?
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item five L.
Make a motion to consider approval of pay application number five in the amount of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents to see MTA Energy Solutions for the work completed on HVAC project at West Marion in Blaskoff, BG number twenty-two dash two eight three.
Everybody feeling good at Blaskoff and West Marion?
Getting along.
Just note, we do have a couple of odd things we're still working on. But we have about two hundred thousand dollars in retainage for a later pay app. And so those things are correct, some will be done in fall break and students are not in the building. So this isn't a final, so we still have a little bit left there.
Thank you, Scott. Questions on this?
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item five M.
I'm going to consider approval of pay application number eight to Griggs Enterprises in the amount of one billion, eighty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and one cents for work performed and three hundred and five thousand, fifty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents to vendors for materials on Marion County High School renovation project, BG number twenty-one dash one oh three.
Questions here?
Keep rolling.
Go on, rollin'.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item five M, please.
Make a motion to consider approval of change order. This was very blurry. For Marion County High School renovation project in the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. Fifteen cents. Sorry. Our contact is.
Mr. Ray?
Mr. Ray, there are a couple of questions for you on that. So I think it's important that the public understands that a large portion of these change orders do the unsuitable soils. And, uh, in the high school budget for this, we had thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars budgeted for this. It's my understanding that, uh, you know, we did core drilling in the front of the school to, uh, and, and unsuitable soil was there, was located there, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and, but it's also my understanding that none of that work has yet been, correct?
On the north side?
On the front side.
On the front side. Correct, they have, they have not started.
So we did not do core drilling behind the school, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess my question, and I think that probably the public would have the very same question, is if we knew unsuitable soils existed on the front of the building, then why would we not suspect that they would exist on the back?
So there's a couple of things. One, of course, we did have an allowance as part of the contract that we could move towards or use towards any found soils. Um, also, the, the timing of the work that was done, or the design work, rather, while the front side was, I believe, part of the design from the beginning of the proj- proj- project, excuse me. The work on the north side originally was going to just be some striping and some cosmetic, uh, step things to the parking lot. And then later on in the project, after we already completed boreings, then it was added as a full-removing parking lot on the north side. So at that point, we'd already completed, um, a lot of the boreings.
So additional work was added?
Correct.
Okay, so it, it, you know, I, I assume that we did that because we thought we were gonna have the, the budget to do that. So then, at what point would we not consider, you know, as we were adding additional items, that there would be additional costs maybe in unsuitable soils? It included as part of that work?
Sure. So on the, the front entrance to the south, obviously, we're expanding the parking that is already there. We're doing a whole lot more, um, paving and parking than just the roundabout, the curbs there. So we are, in fact, building the parking lot over what was basically just grass. On the north side, it had already been basically a parking lot for some time. It had actually kind of performed. There were, there were no signs that it was going to be failing necessarily. So considering that it already been operating as a, as a parking lot, it seemed like it would have been, at the time, unnecessary to spend money to do more boreings when we're basically going back to the parking lot.
And then, uh, my other question is, uh, so when, um, Mr. Spaulding and I met with you in July, I think there were some others involved in that meeting. Uh, were you part of that, I'm gonna be in the virtual meeting. Were you on that?
In July, in terms of discussing?
We talked about what the scope of the work would be to fix the unsuitable soils.
Yes, I've been, I've been on several calls for that, yes.
Okay, uh, so I do recall that conversation. And we were told that, uh, pretty, pretty confidently that digging down eight inches of unsuitable soil, packing that with rock and then putting geogrid over it, we were confident that that was going to be, uh, a solution. But then that ended up not being, okay, is that correct?
And portions, correct. We had to follow to the special inspector who observed things. And so, uh, we did have to go deeper in areas, some areas. We did not do that across the entire surface that had to be prepared. So in fact, if we did go ahead from the beginning and do it much deeper undercut, then we would spend more money than was needed.
So based on the recommendation, then we had to go back and remove the fix that we had put in place, correct?
We hadn't put it in place yet.
We did, we did the eight inches of rock, though, correct?
In some areas, but where we needed to do more, we just further added rocks. So in fact, to not install, remove, and then put back more, I just want to clarify that point.
So of the two hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-nine cent cost, what do you think the percentage of that would be that, of tearing that out and replacing it with the recommended, uh, fix that Griggs had told us initially? Is that a large expense or?
I, I would want to, I can get back to an email to you on, on what that would be, but I don't have the numbers or tell them if that's right. That's, that's all.
Like, it was budgeted thirty-seven thousand is what we talked about for unsuitable soil in the front and nothing in the back. So now, knowing what we know, is that gonna hold? Is that front going to be thirty-seven thousand? Or are we looking at maybe as much as it was in the back?
I can look into that. I want to look back at the boreings and kind of see what other technical information we had at the front. So I don't want to speak without kind of going back and, and double checking it. I can get back to you all in a minute.
A few of my questions, uh, the geotech in the back, whatever you send up to get the ones done. So they do have the information in front, correct? So the person that bid, which was Griggs, does have that information?
Yes, that's included in the bid documents.
Now, the original plan was to rip up some asphalt in the back and replace it, correct? Or was that a secondary plan?
Initially, like early in programmers, some smart design, we're doing like some re-striping. And no doubt from some utility work, we'd have to trench and throw back some. But more or less, we weren't digging up a whole lot of existing northern parking.
And at that point, so was the geotech already done boring by the time this came out?
When, when the complete, you redesigned the north, the parking lot was added? Yes, that was already done.
Who specifically handles the geotech?
That's a combination of architect and structural engineer.
Other question? I think I just want to express a, a pretty significant concern, um, looking at, um, fact-pack tracking our change orders to date. Uh, we have approved seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars in change orders. And we have remaining fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars in our contingency fund. And so we have exhausted ninety-three percent of our contingency. And I don't believe we are ninety-three percent through the project. So that's a pretty significant concern because we are, of course, dealing with a building that was built in nineteen-seventy-one or completed right around in that time. Um, we are going to find other problems. We are going to have other change orders. And so I am really concerned about where these funds are going to come from because our contingency is nearly gone. Um, so, you know, I, I think moving forward in, in additional phases of this project, I would ask that everyone involved in the project be so proactive that it's not even funny. Um, looking for problems that might exist because of the age of the building because we don't have room in this climate, in this financial climate, in this, um, world of inflation that we are living in. We don't have room for this, for only having seven percent of our contingency left when we are probably not even, well, not even halfway through or maybe a little over halfway. Yeah, yeah. Um, so, you know, pretty big, pretty big issue. So any opportunities that we can find, um, to know when these, these issues are gonna crop up on us and just be extra cautious and extra careful in looking for problems that hopefully don't exist. But if they do, it's easier for us to plan for them when they crop up rather than being surprised by them on the back end, so.
Other questions, concerns here?
Comments? I've made comments since the beginning, when y'all first started, that you needed a checklist. And for some reason, your checklist is never replaced, is what I'm afraid of. Um, I'm just deeply disappointed in what's been happening with our funds. It's just ridiculous. And y'all should be concerned as well.
We don't care very much of it.
I feel that the concern hasn't went very far on your end. It has went well on our end. That, that's my comment.
I know, I know, that's something, kind of, and I kind of like, like, all the cracks that have occurred and all that. You can, you still have to fix all of that. So I'd like to, I'd like to have some kind of figure about what's at some of the problems. Um, to me, that's very important because we could be looking at a lot of money from, uh, some of the shifting and whatever in the building that's going on, so.
In addition, uh, this, this work is already happened and it's done. So by us saying no, this, we'd be hurting, creating a lot of exhaustion. We don't, we don't want to hurt anyone. They're great for us, so, so, just putting that out there, of course. It's, 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 we live the late school, so.
Having all these issues and they're ahead of schedule. We're very, very much.
Other questions, comments here? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item five O.
Consider approval of a half-guidance counselor position for U.C. Spaulding Academy?
I'll say.
Ms. Cox, you'd like to talk to us a little bit about this position and what it'll mean for your students?
Um, well, for one thing, this person can meet in small groups with our students. I guess really important to get some of the background from the professional school. Um, work on IOPs, ILPA's, um, help me do certain things. Um, there's lots of things that, that I have as a person.
For those of us that.
Well, yeah, they're gonna have a list with kids that they have to check on. And I want them to be able to do home visits on whoever is not doing what they're supposed to be doing. Uh, that's something that I would like to do, and I just like to do that. Um, somebody who can, what did you say? Oh, yeah, get their credits. That's super important. Um, I mean, I could make a whole list for you.
Originally, I'm gonna chime in. Originally, when it started, I was the counselor at ATC and Holly came aboard with her program. It was manageable. But as the ATC continues to grow with programs and co-ops and partnerships, um, it, that takes all that person's time. And therefore, that leaves kids, all these kids not being serviced properly. So some of these are, are kids that need special supports, that require more one-on-one. And it is definitely needed.
Well, they require, ninety percent of them require that one-on-one attention. That, that's really good.
Ms. Cox, for those of us that don't reside in school world, where IOPs and ILPA's?
IOPs is the individual learning plan that every student has to do. The ILPA is the addendum that goes in if at campus that every student that is in an alternative program has to do. It's very time-consuming. Um, so when kids come into us, that person can meet with them and get that at least started. Um, and then, you know, I'll, I'll be working with them as well with that. But that's what those two things are, very time-consuming things. So that'd be a.
Thank you.
With it being, just forgive me for not knowing, with it being this point five positions, is it one person that's already here that will be just moving their time over to work more? How, how does that work?
We'll have to post it and see.
Okay.
Most of the things, I just want to make a comment on. I think it's pretty powerful to have someone there because we are talking about students that for some reason, they've selected or some not selected a program due to some things that they're lacking. Maybe a vision that they see where their future is going or emotional support. And so that's one reason I think this is so important. Just making sure that they're taken care of, their needs are met, that you have someone that you can work with if you see a particular student falling behind a little bit more. And just meeting those emotional needs that they have, uh, that's, that's a lot.
It is.
And make the comment clear. I think it's very important that you keep them, keep somebody informed that if you need more help, please let us know. I will.
She's hot.
Y'all should know, turn on the game.
I don't mind asking.
That's all.
Other questions, comments here? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item five E.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of revised job description for safety, school safety manager slash officer.
Mr. Ray, you need?
Sure. So in that job description, it specifically says Marion County High School. The Knight Academy, or the Marion Middle Council's been in talks of potentially using that out, part of their allocation to create a school safety manager position there. We just want to update the job description that currently exists so that they can potentially use that. So in other words, it's just gonna change from a location of Marion County reporting to Marion County High School to reporting to Superintendent, that's it. So that's really the only change there.
I see. Today, I saw something all about student resource officer. This is, uh.
School safety manager.
School safety, and then what's in the public is school resource officer. Could you quickly tell me the relationship?
A school resource officer is actually a certified police officer who's not the traditional training in the school resource officer program. This is a classified position that just helps, you know, supervise students, monitor hallways, that kind of thing. So it's, if some parts of it is similar, but then this is not a certified police officer. It's more an extracurricular.
I noticed when I read it, it deals with discipline for students, but it didn't say bullying in particular. Would this person be expected to recognize the act whenever they observed or heard about a bullying situation?
Yeah, so bullying falls under our discipline code conduct. So that's just part of it, yes.
Other questions here? All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion on item five E.
Make a motion to consider approval of my friend, Brogan, who purchased a new Chevrolet Suburban in the amount of fifty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
I will say.
Yeah, so this is fun, this is funding that we get, that we receive for the migrant programs. And I just want to declare this, no general fund dollars will be used. Uh, we are actually the regional center for both Marion and Washington County. So this, this vehicle will be used specifically for this purpose. So this, this fee will be used specifically for this part, this market or anything else.
It's honestly, it's common across other migrant education programs. Uh, we, when we took on Marion County or Washington County, we got the kind of consortium that raised our budget some more funds. But getting Washington County students over would be more suitable if we had a home vehicle. So we worked with Scott and Mr. Abel on getting. And obviously, it's kind of hard, difficult to get that right now. So we're on a waiting list, but this is, will be to transport students. Scott has gone through all the insurance liability, what we're going to do. So that part's done.
And this will only transport school H children needs.
Correct.
Other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion on item six.
Make a motion to approve all student planning and support consent items. A through, A through B and G through O.
I'll second. I just want to take a moment to recognize that we are, we continue to remember and support uh, our fellow school districts in Eastern Kentucky have been impacted by flooding and part of the learning consent items, or learning and support consent items is the approval to donate a surplus bus to Perry County schools. So, um, I know that that area will be impacted for years to come. And so when we have these opportunities to support our fellow, uh, school family members, we'll take it. All in favor?
Aye.
Item seven is acknowledgement of personnel actions. So acknowledge that I need a motion on item eight, please.
May I have the chair's person that would like to make a motion to determine.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you all.